Start with the prayer, then the pledge.
Heavenly Father, we just come to you to just thank you for the spread weather you've given us. We're thankful for everybody here that's here tonight. We pray for the residents, the people that are sick. We pray for healing for them. Give us all wisdom tonight to do the right thing for the village through Christ my prayer.
Amen.
I plead to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Eric.
Here.
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 You have before you the August 7th council meeting minutes for your approval. Any additions, fractions? I'll entertain a motion to accept them. Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Eglie, yes.
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 Beverly?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Okay, you have before you the bills for your approval. Any questions?
I have the questions now. Jones is an engineering for the water picking plant, ninety-five, eighty-five, thirty-two. I thought we were done up there.
Well, we are. The oil field is done.
What are these jobs for?
Just part of their engineering. There's still nine thousand six hundred and six dollars without outstanding yet.
On top of this?
The total was one eighty-six, three ninety-one for the engineering fees for that.
Why did they do the ninety-five hundred and not all of it get it done?
I don't know why.
Did they do work to deserve this or just because they said that's what it cost it? That's why the bill missed?
I'd have to let you know later exactly what the charge was.
Okay. How about E.J. Prescott for fifteen thousand on radio reed meters? I thought several times they have said, this is it. We get these and then we've got all we need.
And this was a partial delivery of about forty-five thousand dollars for the radio reeds. We're still probably three hundred and sixty, three hundred and seventy meters away from and all the radios put in. From what I remember on that, back when I think Jesse was here, new people, they were doing cycles of that. Then they, because of COVID and stuff, they couldn't get anymore. It's been a process of updating the whole town and sectors. I think I remember.
What's going on for Pepper? The East End, which has fifteen thousand thousand pounds of bills. Okay, living on to the blower motor removal install for thirty-one thousand dollars.
Yeah, the volleyball courts were, they were like thirty thousand, five hundred dollars. This original estimate was thirty-five thousand for the volleyball courts to relocate and set holes.
They said blower motors.
Correct. That's all part of JDY excavating. There's a whole list of stuff that came out to me that thirty-one, thirty-one thousand, six hundred dollars was the total price for them to come in and remove the electric motor, the old blower, and then set the new blower and electric motor.
In addition, so his invoice also includes the large courts also?
Yes, that's the courts, motors, thirty-one thousand, fifty-nine ninety-eight.
So this will clean him all up?
Yeah.
And do we have all of the blowers working down at the sewer pump?
The two that are in yet are operating. The third one is over at RNS right now. Just ordered parts Friday for it.
You've got your motors picked up today? Okay, if you'd let me know about that on Jones and Henry later, I appreciate that. Ken, I don't have anything else.
Which department was the company that I worked for?
To be fair, grounds.
Is that, did that replace one or was it?
A red X mark. That's one of those all our village properties.
Do you have a new operator for that?
I have.
Do you have a motion to pay the bills?
Sure, I'll make a motion to pay them.
Go second.
One second.
Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yep.
I think I'm okay to say yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Eglie?
Yes.
Okay, boards and commissions, planning commission met August seventeenth. Minutes are in the package. Any questions on that? Okay, any other boards or commissions to report? Council committee reports, no minutes were submitted. Anybody having meetings?
Um, we didn't have a meeting, but Eric got ahold of me and also got ahold of Tony. We spoke very briefly through some texts that we haven't answered. Ron?
Bauer.
Bauer. Did he talk to you about that?
He had just asked me for an update.
Are we going to do anything or?
I got numbers today from Jonathan Yoder to set a couple of catch bases. Kind of going to do a little different than what Choice One recommended. But anyways, the number from JDY was eighteen thousand. Choice One's engineers estimate everything they were going to do is seventy-five thousand.
Are we going to go with, are you going to go with him and take care of that mess or what do you think?
I mean, we can, it's totally up to you guys. I have all the confidence in the world and it's.
Oh, I, yeah, I don't have a problem with JDY. Do we want to do it? I mean, I thought it was your call, but Eric thinks it needs to go to the council.
What do you need to know?
Behind Ron Bauer, who was high driver, years and years and years. And then down on the end, towards Pittsburgh, great big rock was built and drains to him. Right behind him, a new house was built on the Brian Street, drains to him. They did some dirt work over on one of the other houses, drains to him. Now he, all the trees that he had planted back in his backyard, which was really fancy and nice, and they're all dead. They drowned up. I've been down there a couple of times. This has been ongoing for a year or two. And I came up with an idea. I came up with an idea and gave it to Cory. Cory talked to some engineers, went with that. Like he said, the best shot he got back was seventy-five thousand dollars to start at one end and drain it and then drain over to the creek. Now he found another option for eighteen thousand dollars. And I think it's not that we're doing Ron Bauer a big job or we're doing it for his property. We're doing it for the whole square in there. I mean, they all have a water problem. This can fix it. And I just, I think, I think it ought to be done. It ought to be good.
Is this a public driveway? Is it an alley?
No, no.
It's all private property?
It's through their yards, yes.
There's, there is a utility easement there.
Yes, utility easement, correct.
An AEP utility easement. But where that's going to go, I think it'll be just outside of that easement. So it would be knocking on some doors and discussing with the homeowners. I think there's three of them we have to talk to.
So is this a private matter between people or do you think we ought to get involved in it?
Well, I think, I think that because we let, and we have guidelines that new owners are supposed to do. And we have guidelines for everything that you build. And we have what's called a planning commission. We don't look at anything. We don't, we don't have anybody that goes out and goes, well, if you build here and drain your water here, then you're going to ruin this guy. We don't do that. So we let these problems get built around somebody that had no problem. And now I think we ought to correct the problem for everybody.
So my question with that is, I know there's been probably five or six other folks in the neighborhood complaining.
You start this precedence, you're going to, how far are you going to go with other situations? Since I've sat on council, I've known numerous issues with the same situation. But you do it for one, you got to do it for all.
There are several of the people involved in this that have said that they would gladly donate seed money. They didn't say how much money, they said seed money. So there are property owners that are involved in this that are willing to kick up some money. I'm certain it's not eighteen thousand dollars they're going to kick up, but they're willing to help.
What's your thoughts, Troy? The problem is, well, I mean, you could make an argument that potentially the village has some responsibility if we have regulations on the books that we're not enforcing or whatever. Whoever built the structures and stuff also bears some responsibility because they're the ones that are throwing water down on the other properties. So I guess, I mean, if you looked at it from a total liability standpoint, there's probably multiple people that should be feeding the pot potentially, not just the village paying free. So if it's a question of should the village, assuming there's an appropriate agreement as to how it's to be done and how it's to be paid, should we contribute a portion or even a substantial portion of it? I mean, that's for you guys to decide. There, you know, there may be some responsibility based upon those things. But there's responsibility that lies elsewhere as well and.
The other big thing is you also need to have a plan that's going to happen for a future, which we don't have. So to start remedying the issue now without a plan moving forward, I don't think is a good idea either.
We're going to get a lot of knocks at the door. Well, we have to start somewhere. We can't just continue to tax people and then when they go, hey, I need help. Just, well, I'm sorry, doesn't fit our agenda.
Well, that's also.
And another reason we need to be involved is if somebody goes in the center and corrects their problem, that's not helping the guy here, not helping the guy here, it's going to be done wrong. We need to be in charge so that it's done correctly. I guess I like the good old boys and not these lawyers. No offense, but.
Okay, what's the council's wishes, thoughts?
To me, it seems like a civil issue, especially since we haven't set the precedents that we require an existing typography survey. At this point, to me.
We don't need all of that. All I got to do is go down here and look at it.
But you have to have a basis for something.
No, you don't. No, you're, you're going out of the book. We're not talking about, we're talking about getting jobs done.
I understand what you're saying, and that's a private approach. It's not a public approach. We, you have to have standards for that and you need to have that documented. It's the same issue that we ran into down the park. Nothing was documented. We didn't have existing typography surveys to go back on. We didn't have, we don't have proposed grading to go back on. I understand what you're saying, but if you don't have the policies set in place that doesn't have excavation background, it's not going to do any good. And you don't have policies in place for whomever that inspector is to base their decisions and judgment on them, then it's a one-off basis.
What are you talking about inspector? We don't inspect anything in this town.
That's, that's what he's saying is you're just going to keep having the problems going forward if you just say, well, we got these guidelines, but we never use them or we don't have anybody that enforces them. And so then every time somebody goes off and builds something and it causes water problems on their neighbors or whatever, then we're just going to get in their pocket and here's fifteen thousand, here's twenty thousand, as opposed to, and that doesn't solve Ron's or their problem down there right now. But what he's saying is, you know, you've got to treat the symptoms, you know, but you also got to get behind the cause and just come up with a plan so that it's not happening over and over again. So you either, and I think I've mentioned this before, you either have, I'm not saying to suggest this, you either have no regulations and it's wild, wild west and then from the village standpoint, the village doesn't bear any responsibility. It's all between neighbors and the like. Or you have regulations and they have some teeth to them and you regulate them and have grounds for when you tell some builder, whether it's somebody local you've known your whole life or somebody from out of town that's building, you say, no, you can't do that there because that's not an acceptable stormwater plan or whatever. You got to, you know, get your designer, engineer, whoever to write up a plan. And then who's qualified? So say they do, say Taylor's building something and he gets with some engineer and they design some water plan. Who at the village is qualified to look at that plan and say, yep, that meets our guidelines? That's going to work or no, it doesn't. That's always the problem with all this.
Certain things. One, I spoke, and it hasn't been all that long before, four, five months ago, I said, we need a plan. We need to sit down and have a plan, where we're headed. Nothing's happened. You're right, people have been here with water problems. But one thing about it, I have been in this town for sixty-nine years. I know the little pockets, but I have. And places that flood and have flooded ever since I was a little kid and used to play in the deep water, when they come in here and go, hey, this place is flooded. Yeah, it's flooded for the last fifty-five years. Now we've got a place that's never flooded, put it this way. I think we're dealing with different things.
Part of the issue too is the dialogue for this issue actually began before the house was built. And he was given a runaround by previous administrator. So, and he has all of that documentation that took place. He tried to stop it. He tried to address an issue. And he unfortunately, it's all in the, all in the anyways based on what he has. I'm with you, like, we can't be fixing everybody's problems. I get that.
This is, this is a different type of problem. It has different circumstances around it. It's not your average, you got a water in the backyard, what you want to do. It's different in that area.
Well, I can't say yes or no. I haven't been involved in this conversation, but at the same time, we need policies to prevent that from happening. And who built the house? Why is the builder not being held accountable? If there's dialogue that's happened, why is the builder not putting the bill in this?
Well, here's another situation. If you go around to the street, to Brian Street and look at the house, it's probably one of the only houses down there that's built like it's supposed to where it's got to fall to the street. It's just that the backyard also falls together. I mean, you know, a lot of these builders have come to town. I can show you houses on Spencerville Street, different places where they're two foot lower than the road from. And they used to flood. I don't know if it still did. But, you know, that house that we're talking about wasn't built right.
So speaking of more, I mean, the Spencerville area, now I'll go back on the private owners and that was pay builders. The builder chose to do something one way and we said.
No, we took care of that. When they all came to town and put all that stormwater in, we tied all those catch bases in where it used to flood down around there. All that got tied in.
Didn't that just, the one that just happened? Would have been rehersed. That was all.
Where's that at?
It'd be Limber and Maori Residence.
Limber, Maori.
Out, oh, Clearout, yep.
All of those, he said.
Here's the secret. Here's the secret, Taylor. Now, you're supposed to be in the construction business. If you build a house that's below the road, below everything around it, don't come tell me you got water problems because you brought it on yourself.
I understand what you're saying.
But if you build it, put it in a hole, save all that money on fill dirt to bring the house up, then you come to the village, the village will lay off, accept for you. Well, that's a cheap way out.
But on what basis are you, so you're looking at your personal judgment?
Yeah, Spencerville Street always flooded.
Okay.
Always flooded.
But it's your personal judgment? Because can you prove that before those houses were there, the grading looked like this? And now it looks like this?
Have you read that water came this way? Came to Spencerville, out of that field came to Spencerville.
But I'm saying, just two winters ago, they came to the village and said, hey, we have water problems. We didn't have water problems before. And we said, it's your problem that's sorted out. So why is this any different?
Because he didn't have a water problem until everything that, all the structures were built around him.
According to the previous, the others on Spencerville, they did neither.
That's bull.
I'd say the same thing down there.
Are we ready to vote on this? Need a motion to have Cory use that contractor?
We initially had the meeting, it was discussed that we would be doing the work. Can we not do the work?
It would just take quite a while for us to do that.
But what would that price like?
It's cotton material.
I might would like to see that number because that was discussed as well, is us not outsourcing it, but us being able to handle a problem.
Issue is we don't, we have a backup. He's got him in the excavator. He's going to be able to get in there. The places that we can't get into is the biggest thing. Unless we're the bottom right, some of them.
He does it every day. It's going to happen fast. In and out.
So I don't think the city should be in there digging. I think not a contractor do it.
So I guess my question is, if this goes through, what are you, what is going to be your basis when the two owners, three owners, Tom and Spencerville, come and say, we didn't have issues before, we had to pay this bill? The one on the corner of Arthur and High Street, same scenario. They say, okay, we had to pay to do this. Two in from Arthur.
There's Stan Stuckey used to live and right on the corner for all the hickups there around it.
Yeah, the new house on Arthur. All the neighbors complained on that one. So when they come to the village and say, you know what, we need this fixed also. Well, that's what I'm at. I, I understand what you're, where you're coming from, saying, okay, this may have been an issue, may have not. But if you don't have a basis and you don't have.
I have a representative basis. Well, hell, let's just end this. I made a motion that you get ahold of Johnny and have him do the thing in contract form, not to exceed what you stated as eighteen thousand dollars or whatever it was. That's my motion. Let's get it over with.
Second.
Well, that certainly did take long.
With all the stacking, we can't vote.
I agree that we need to have standards.
Well, I'll tell you this. This town needs a plan. This town needs a set of standards and a set of guidelines for when you want to do new construction and/or move a lot of dirt. I made about the rules for when you move a lot of dirt. Those are already in our organs, but not like this. So those things need done.
I agree.
Moving on, what else you got, Ron?
Well, I'll entertain a second.
Reasoning.
Okay, motion dies. Mr. straight, report. You got anything else?
We are looking for a part-time groundskeeper for the rest of this season. If he enrolls in next season, currently Mike is just sailing in and going as necessary. Maple Lane paving is supposed to start this week. And I was notified on Friday. It would now be the lead of the twenty-eighth. They were set back a couple of days due to some rain. Four twenty-two and four twenty-six Elm Street is in the process of being demolished. Mel Von Trigger has bought those two properties and is taking those down. I know he's looking at trying to get an empty lot that's over there on that street as well.
Where is it, Eric?
Over on Elm Street, basically across from the recycle lot.
Oh.
You know, house is down?
I know he's looking at building something there.
When's our house in Chicago? Haven't been coming down.
They were supposed to have started on it last week. And I don't, I'm not sure where we're at with that. I didn't touch base with Mike. Mike on that there. The volleyball courts, we did get the holes up or some process of waiting for contractors to come in and knife the power in from the handle of the basketball court. And then there, down there, put the LK lines up on the poles, get the nets up and turn it business. I'm going to act like I'm.
Any questions for Cory?
When's the deadline on COVID?
It is the twenty-third, fourth of May.
Do we have any numbers on finance, cash flow, rental pressure for fiscal officers on it? The, I guess, any updates on finance options?
Finance hasn't been yet.
They don't have the numbers yet.
We can't, or Jer, any of the potential options I could, to know how it's going to be implemented?
Who's in charge of this?
Of the splashback pool?
Yeah, splashback and the pool.
Who's in charge?
Has everything been handed to him?
Not everything.
Who's it, who's it, who's doing this?
Once you get the bids, then you'll know. But there's a committee. There's a committee.
I guess at least prepared to make a decision when the bids get open, when it's, that is my question.
There have to be legislation done anyway to do it, obviously, so that won't happen till the next meeting.
There, there's a chance that we might postpone this another week with two contractors ahead. Some, I guess, unforeseen circumstances come up. So I don't know if we'll postpone it at the last minute for another week. I know we've already postponed it from the eleventh to the twenty-third. We have received a few bids in the meantime, but there's two more that want a bid and they're trying to get something there for us.
Is that your call or is that engineers' call?
It would, on the postponing it, it would ultimately be the village's call.
Your call.
We're with that person, our ultimate timeline. Is it still the goal was to have things stop and running by those?
Memorial Day of next year was the ultimate goal. If it puts us back a few weeks, that, and that's a point where that thing is up and running and fully functional by the time it just comes out of there.
You're just talking the path, the splashback? Are you talking the whole thing?
Memorial Day was the ultimate goal, just for the fact that the old pool was open for business on Memorial Day in nineteen fifty-five. So that was the ultimate goal, was open in Memorial Day of next year.
So are you going to base your decision on whether or not you get those two bids by Wednesday?
Uh, three's a lot if you have this.
Okay, any other questions? Any discussion?
I will let you guys know ahead of time. We are, the process ordered a new to us lift. Ooh, ours has been in need of a lot of, a lot of work. It'll be about three weeks out. Rather than new to us, it's twenty fifteen. Sure, one that we have is two thousand and one. Quick background on it. We bought it back in March twenty-fourteen, seventeen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars was the price of it. We bought it with four thousand, five hundred and sixty-one hours. I couldn't say how many hours we have on it now. Our meter is missing. Called around to a few different places, sent them all the information they wanted along with some pictures. And trade-in value is anywhere between three to five thousand dollars, depending on what it may or may not be. Since I have, since I have been here, we put just a little over a thousand dollars into repairs on it. And right now, as it sits between the wiring harness on the dashboard and the wiring harness, it goes down the boom. And then there's one of the wheels that's kind of tipped in pretty good where the key pin has wore out, but it's into the bushing and into the I-beam. Price on that was like fifty-five hundred dollars for them to come get it, fix it off. So those, that price alone is like ten thousand, thirty-five dollars on something that has got a trade-in value of five thousand dollars. So we'll be upside down on it in no time. So that's what I based my decision on. The account that this is coming out of, got a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the capital, Lake Street. And the price on this lift was thirty-eight thousand dollars. They are giving us thirty-five hundred for ours. And they give us a balance of thirty-one, five.
What was that like side work originally that you got a lot of questions here?
It was for the buying brand new, brand new trucks. Now that we have the enterprise, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, we got a lot. It's just there. I mean, it's, it can be used for the lift, but we can't, we can't go without it, that's for sure.
How are you going to use the lift? What are you guys doing with it?
Uh, we do everything from changing, uh, lights down, downtown sidewalks, traffic lights, tree trimming, um...
Christmas.
Yeah, a bit of Christmas decorations, we need to get on, do different things. A lot of, a lot of tree work with it.
Will this new one be able to reach the fall footprints?
Somebody flipped them, we gotta know.
So, uh, this one is forty-five feet, the old one is forty, this is an articulating one, so it's a, it's a lot smaller looking unit, but it's, it's capabilities of our old one, it's a little bit more. There's one sitting down there at the grandstand at Fairgrounds, so...
Is it JSG?
Yeah, the exact, exact same thing sitting down there at the fairgrounds.
Same grand?
Yeah, JSG, yes, and it has, uh, just a little, little over seventeen hundred hours on it.
Do you still have gas?
Yes. Is there a warranty with it, or anything, like, thirty days, or something?
Two or four wheel?
It, it's a four-wheel, it, it's, uh, Carter's built Georgia right now, go, and it, like I said, about three weeks out, they run it through their shop, and they go through everything, and they'll send it our way.
Do we have to get, I feel like when we purchase vehicles, or, like, let's take for just saying, you know, last stop, I mean, does it matter what that, that thing?
You buy anything you want, so below fifty thousand dollars.
I did see next year that special bill to seventy-five thousand dollars.
Hmm, we get shit for that.
That's a four, see, I believe.
Okay, any other questions, concerns? Okay, now, next on the Donald agenda, Andy Wagner, Choice Physical Therapy, speak to council, if you go up to the podium, please.
Good evening, I'm Andy, uh, Choice Therapy, my partner and I, Brian Ross, been in therapy for about fifty combined years. Uh, started a clinic in Auburn, uh, about eighteen months ago, kind of a model of smaller towns, smaller communities, all of its size, they still have another one, we're like, probably four or five more, uh, facilities over the next four or five years. Unfortunate, uh, some groundwork for, for Hitzville, found a great location downtown, uh, also hired two new gentlemen that are PTs from the area, uh, where we locate to the area, back to the area, I guess from college, uh, for their, their commitment. They can start with us next week, we'll have them kind of learning the ropes from us, uh, in the clinic in Auburn for a couple of months, until we'll have them run it here, at which time we'll be able to ship over, and we'll get started here. Certainly, uh, looking at, there's some groundwork improving things now, uh, insurances, they're probably the biggest challenge in anything in healthcare. We are already in network with ninety-five percent, there's a few in Ohio we need to add on. Uh, lessons learned, when I did it in Auburn, you need a location, because sometimes they'll come out and survey, the first survey came out for us there and said, you need to make a warehouse, it's under construction, so we have to wait till doors are open for several of those, but we accept all the insurance and all payers, uh, whether we're in network then or not, uh, and then we just either write it off or delay the build, so... Definitely, uh, this is, we're gonna need to grow in, uh, our two PTs will be the ones operated here, uh, myself and my partner are from Auburn and Leo, so we're, we're going to do the local, and you'd be more hands-on if they get started, you need these gentlemen trained on the business side, what we want from Choice, and we want our patients to be, and then they take it around, and then we're... Open it up, you guys have questions for me, Grantly?
Are you, are you and, uh, Mr. Ross, are you, your Choice One, or you are franchised to Choice One?
No, we're both, we're fifty-fifty owners of Choice. So, he and I started, we don't have any anticipation franchising or any of that, never.
You're from Auburn, born and raised Auburn?
I'm from Leo, he's from Auburn.
Okay.
I moved to Leo after PT school, before that I was from Wayback, Indiana, I'm sure no one's heard of it. All right, there you go, small town, very small town, so that's, that's kind of our niche, uh, where we wanna be, you know, we look, it's a four-way market, that's, that's not the niche we want.
Okay, any questions for Andy?
Wouldn't you like to be on the run?
Ideally, you know, we should close on the property this week, uh, around, should be pretty quick, so, really November, uh, we could want the operational, uh, we'll have those in plenty, so, should be good, before, before the first of the year would be nice.
Okay, any other questions?
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Andy. Eric, do you have anything to say, or you're just here?
I'm here for support.
Okay. Okay, uh, solicitors report, Troy.
First thing I have is ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash fifteen, uh, first reading by caption only, an ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance. Got questions, if you're, I think you need this right away.
A second. I appreciate it.
And what's this for?
It is to balance the appropriations. We have the deposits refunded on a fly, the forty-two fifty is the, um, donation money for the splash pad, the left that I have on account, they were all in our ordinance, um, that we wrote when we were doing it, and it did not get put into the D I M system, so this is all I'm doing is making even.
Uh, that, emergency? Yes. Sorry, number one.
You can, you can have your readings if you want.
We just suspended, suspend Mike's, second, second.
Roll call.
We did what?
I agree with you. Mike.
Mark?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yeah.
Egley, yes, Flucker?
Yes.
Mark?
Second, third readings, ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash fifteen by caption only, ordinance to amend annual appropriations ordinance and declaring an emergency.
Move, second. Yep. Roll call.
Beverly? Mark?
Yes.
Egley? Yes, Martin?
Yes.
Flucker?
Yes.
Next is, uh, first reading ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash sixteen by caption only, a first reading by caption only, an ordinance reinstating and extending the job creation tax incentive program established by the village of Dixwell, Ohio.
And you're saying it'll let this last, is that correct?
Yes. I think for a couple of years now.
Is this for emergency?
No. Just trying to get it in order.
Does that affect APT? Is it their timing?
No. I don't believe so. Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash fourteen, first reading, or, I'm sorry, third reading by caption only, authorizing, uh, the village administrator to enter into a lease agreement with Enterprise, please manage it for vehicle replacements. Got a couple of questions?
Do they punish us on the fines?
Who's that, Enterprise?
Enterprise. You can put all the miles on them, you want to. No charge. Because we end up owning the building.
We can't.
Yeah. Who services them?
We can take them wherever, service them ourselves.
We can, we can take them where we want to.
It'll be hard to, like, keep them on board.
And, uh, if it's, say, transmission remote or something, and it's expensive, who pays for that? Do we pay them, and then they pay us, or?
No, it's under warranty.
Under warranty, and so, motor transmission, anything, it's, it's all taken care of?
Yeah, the factory warranty applies to it.
You're gonna get rid of them every year before the warranty's gone?
No. We plan on rotating them out like every five years.
Okay, so who's gonna take care of it after the warranty's gone? Warranty on them new vehicles, only about two, three years, if the max.
I mean, well, we're responsible for it, once the warranty's up, but I don't, I'm not sure exactly what the GM warranty is, if Don Taylor knows.
You're going to GM's?
That's what we are offering here.
I'm, I'm, I'm not so sure I have.
Most of them, I mean, they used to be like three, or thirty-six thousand miles on, a lot of them, I think all that's been increased.
A lot of them have, and I mean, you have the option to get extended, like, the...
We can, yeah.
For product. Something to put down.
Uh, motion on this, accept this, final read? Second.
My second.
Roll call.
Mark?
Yes.
Egley? Yes, Flucker?
No.
Flucker?
Yes.
Beverly?
No.
See, the past three, two, ready?
Second reading, a resolution twenty-twenty-three dash nineteen by caption only, a resolution to enter into an agreement with the Finance County Commissioners for the recovery of monies expended for providing legal counsel to indigent persons for the calendar year twenty-twenty-four. First reading, a resolution twenty-twenty-three dash twenty, a resolution of the village of Dixwell, Ohio, authorizing the revolving loan fund committee to enter into a loan agreement with Choice Physical Therapy and declaring an emergency.
Can I make a statement before we do that?
Before we just suspend the rules?
Before you vote on this?
Yeah.
Suspend the rules?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
If it's great, you wanna do this, I just think it's the worst timing that could ever happen. We've got a hospital down here that's struggling, and a big chunk of their money is physical therapy, and thanks to Grothaus, who's down there, he pours it all into that thing, and keeps it go, that thing's going when nothing else in the hospital is. I would much rather be able to tell people around the world that our little town has a hospital, as opposed to say, we have physical therapy. I can't believe that, that we are gonna sit here and, and welcome, and trust me, if it wasn't for the conditions that things are in, I, I'd be all on board, but I can't believe that we're gonna go against our hospital. Just a fiddle building up town, I just can't.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, we wanna suspend the rules, right, that's what we're, got a motion to suspend the rules. I'll go to second. I'll second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mark?
Yes.
Beverly?
No.
Egley? Yes, Flucker?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
That's just the first reading, then, because without the interference, I don't know if we suspend the rules.
It's not enough to suspend.
It's not, no, it takes, uh, three-quarters of the council to suspend the rules, so, with one person gone, that means everybody, we have to do it.
Oh, and that before I find that's...
Uh, it's out of the total council, not out of the ones that are here, huh? Next is resolution twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-one, a first reading by caption only, a resolution expressing support for the enterprise zone agreement between the Board of Commissioners of the Finance County, Ohio, and EPT Manufacturing Solutions and declaring an emergency.
Who's gonna suspend the rules? Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Egley? Yes, Flucker?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Yes. Mark?
Yes.
Second, third readings, a resolution twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-one, a, uh, resolution expressing support for the enterprise zone agreement between the Board of Commissioners of the Finance County, Ohio, and EPT Manufacturing Solutions and declaring an emergency.
So, move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mark?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Egley? Yes. Flucker?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
And then last is, uh, resolution twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-two, uh, first reading by caption only, a resolution accepting the amounts rates as determined by the budget commission, and authorizing necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor and declaring an emergency.
Got somebody to tell us to suspend the rules? Motion.
I want to suspend the rules.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Real quick, um, this is for the ten mil tax limit, I guess, can we elaborate on what this one's for?
Um, our general fund is our tax base for next year, and it's inside the ten mil limit, but it's two point three mil. They're listed on the second page.
So, is this, um, the rule, that's separate from the US?
It's annually.
It's just the annual, it is the tax, like, base, it's not, it's not like a separate levy that has to be involved every year. Do you remember when we do those levies, they always talk about how they're in excess of the ten mil limitation, this is the, under the ten mil limitation, it's not anything that's, like, approved by the voters, I know.
Second. Roll call.
I have those two for the...
Oh, suspend it?
Yeah. Mark?
Yes.
Beverly? Marty?
Yes.
Flucker?
Yes.
Egley? Yes.
Second, third reading, a resolution twenty-twenty-three dash twenty, twenty, or, twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-two, resolution accepting the amounts rates as determined by the budget commission, authorizing the next, necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor and declaring an emergency.
So, move. Second. Roll call.
Eric?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Flucker?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Egley? Yes.
Is that a problem?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any questions for the solicitor?
Uh, are we, do we have anybody to replacing?
Are we looking?
Yeah, we've got a couple of them, I assume, we'll be doing interviews next week.
Any other questions?
Uh, I don't know where it falls in that, but, uh, anybody know what's going on down with, uh, Beach Street, Robert?
Let's see, I'm calling, I'm talking to him. Off to someone, I'm talking to him.
I think you got an email. I don't know about the address, is that what you and I talked about? Yeah, I, since you and I talked about it, I didn't hear anything about it. That's what I mean, they were talking about, I, I was told maybe by you, Ron, that they had done some work to make it seem like they were gonna...
That was back in April.
Oh, I thought that was just recent, that's what they did.
No, it was back in April, and then we gave them from April to August first to get something done, and, uh...
What we were gonna do it.
And, and, but they haven't done anything except, somewhere around April, they dug alongside of it.
Got it.
And, uh...
I thought that you said that was more...
No, that was, that was what they did to, I guess, to keep us happy, uh, didn't work, uh, but now, now the, the floor joists are all just hanging in the air, uh, I mean, I know you could walk in the house and see that much daylight between floor joists and wall.
Uh, fire chief have the ability to condemn a property?
Sure does.
It thinks it's a public safety hazard, and I think if it's bad enough, I, I can't remember, is there people residing in there?
Yes.
The health department probably also has some, uh, authority as far as people residing there, if it's a health and safety risk, now, they usually get involved more when it's, uh, less a structural issue and more of a...
You know, we talked about water sewer, and I checked them, all that, and they're good.
Okay, yeah, with some type of water sewer type issue, or there's mold in the hot, you know, as opposed to the things probably to fall down on somebody, but they, it, that might be work, if nobody's talked to them, it might be worth the call, but, um, it's...
Can we put that on Bruce's shoulders, or his shoulders?
Call the health department, or you call the...
Call the health department and get something moving in the direction of either, I would say, but...
Do you know where it is, Bruce?
Down on Beach Street?
No, I don't, I've known one, I don't know.
It's a one sixteen?
One sixteen.
But it's not dissimilar, maybe it's not quite as emergent, but it's not dissimilar to when our former fire chief had to take action, and the building was falling down there on High Street, and...
Correct, but that one fell out.
That was, it had to be dealt with like right away, and it was obvious to anybody that looked at it, so, that would be the, um, the comparison, though, is, in, in times like that, there is, uh, the fire chief does have, at a minimum, condemnation, and saying that nobody should be, for lack of a better term, there shouldn't be an occupancy permit.
Well, we're going on, I mean, we're headed towards two years that we have told them something has to happen, and, uh, and they, you know, nine months ago, they dug alongside of it, or, first nine months, they dug alongside of it, and, and now they just lie about it, and so, and some of the people, and they stopped me on the street, uh, so we either gotta do something about it, or forget about it.
I'd say it's a lot worse than it was six months ago.
Oh, yes, 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 yes. I talked to, uh, I think I sent it to, I don't know if I sent it to, I sent it to you, email, asking Mike, uh, what, what plan was, when this didn't happen, and he said there was no plan, um, fine, I'll go along with that, but I would also think that, since he's kind of in charge of this and sending the letters, he would've got a whole... But I would also think that since he's kind of in charge of this and sending the letters, he would've got ahold of you or him or me or Mark and said, "What shall I do now?" But no, he just sat there like he normally does. So something's gotta happen. We can't just keep, you know, year after year after year, just let it all happen. Why?
They're gonna speak. It wasn't gonna, it wasn't gonna speak. It wasn't gonna speak, but the nuisance board, that's what they're for. Tell about exactly the steps you take from the beginning to the end of the book.
Right.
You don't have to descend, he's on the nuisance board, granted.
Yes.
There's some air.
And he...
And fire chief.
Yep.
So you three take care of it. Mike's kinda like the secretary, he's not part of the board, and neither is Cory.
Then why is Mike in our meetings? He, he's taking minutes and sending out all the letters and doing all that?
Well, he acts as sheriff in the average case, takes some minutes and then responds. But you three, we won't capture in the ordinance book, uh, such nuisance board team. And if the physical condition's that bad, it's got in there what percent of this, what percent of the... It's all spelled out.
It will not let us in.
Yeah, it will. There's a process, just read the ordinance. Oh, you don't see it. I know it's in there because I dealt with it for like twenty years. We did have an inspector come in, that was a waste of time.
Yes.
So, I mean, we, the nuisance board is working, but you just... So what's the next step?
The nuisance board has, sounds like the nuisance board has the authority to condemn a property.
Yes, it does. I'm sorry, but it does.
Can we do that, solicitor? Is it, is it, condemn it?
They're following with the ordinance.
Evict the people? Close her down?
Well, you're not evicting them.
Hang on a second, give me a break. I'm trying to look it up.
You ain't believing what he's living in that.
You just wanted to rent it yourself.
Yeah, it's better than what I got.
Don't look you used to.
Yeah.
I'll have an answer for you tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay.
This is floating very good.
But yeah, there is the procedure, I can email it. There is the procedure, um...
What about, uh, what about the sidewalk, Kent? Uh, we've got the same situation going on with the sidewalk. Who's in charge of that? Mike?
That falls under the zoning, yeah.
We've got a guy that chased, chased our contractors away. Set a pico on top of the sidewalk and said, "Don't come back." And, uh, what do we do with that?
Guys sitting next to you, you think we handle that?
We don't arrest people.
No, but he gave the guy a lawyer.
I told him to toe the back though.
There you go.
I think it might be moved today, I think. Don't quote me, we'll check.
Well, this, you know, these things can't just continue to go on. We either gotta just act like we've never seen it before and forget it, or, or come to, come to a better man, so...
Troy, you can email me tomorrow and then the nuisance board can act.
It was formed up as far as the law.
I've seen some boards that threw in...
That's what I was talking about when I said, I thought you said they had done something recently.
Forms related.
The sidewalk related.
Yeah, but they were installed.
Oh, they were installed?
Yeah.
Well, that was all based up, based on the timing of the violation they have, based on our current way it's indicated you have.
Our, our time, their time had ran out, Taylor. Their time is down.
At that point?
So our contractor pulled in to do it. The contractor that Cory hired to do all these around town, they pulled in to do it and they got chased off.
Sounds like the police seemed to be involved in back when it's covered.
Well, well, we want to...
Troy, I'll look into it, and then he can get with me and then we'll move on.
Okay.
I'll get with you too.
Okay, any other questions for Troy? Do you have any updates on Tower?
Haven't heard of things since last year. Sarah just heard something.
Well, you gave them the last update.
The, I don't know if you went up to them. I'm not sure what the latest is updated.
Okay. No, we, um, the, the person that we were working with, with American Tower, um, she left, which has ended up being a good thing. Uh, we have a new contact that's, uh, they have it all in review now. So we've sent them all the documents. Uh, we had a virtual call with her and she made the comment that this should be a piece of cake. When I hear that out of a lawyer's mouth, I'm like, that one's awesome. So, um, we're, we're supposed to hear something back from her next week, so we'll wait and see. Um, but things are starting to move along, so.
Mike, sorry.
Okay, any other questions? Is he, no, Troy? Okay, uh, department has police chief. Not here. No, he came in for this morning, so he's probably sleeping. Fire chief, first.
Yeah, and I set around some numbers for you. This next few months, Abby, our daytime full-time E M T, is continually gonna go to Archibald for schooling, for nurse's schooling. So she is sort of on second shift the whole semester, along with, with her backup. She's the E M R, so... How long will she be able to run with her situation? Um, I'm, she's thinking she'll be able to do the full thing, you know? Yeah, yeah. Go to work, come back home, run here. Um, so John and Bob are now gonna be daylight full-time until Abby jumps off of schooling. We don't know about her, her second semester, third semester, whatever. But I can, I can almost come to say it. Who? Is it she? Um...
No.
No, 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 no. He's just going to...
You pretty much got the shift covered.
Yeah, we've got the shift covered. I just wanna let you know that if you don't see Abby on a daylight run, you'll understand the law.
All the facts.
Yep. So, um... Hannah had her baby boy, so she's on her way to be mending. She's planning on being back in ten weeks for several. Must've gotten too confused. Yeah, so we'll see what happens there and stuff.
Yeah, but any other E M Rs or other people helping cover some of the shifts with Hannah?
I had a, I had a talk with them Monday night. They, um, said they'd step up if they had to. I mean, everybody's got a young family, the E M R's a young family, so it's... It's a situation that kids in the house, they can't, they can run freely, but they can't be tied down. And that's been our whole problem all along, so... That's why I wanna talk to you a couple of things.
Okay.
So, that's all I have, any questions?
Thanks, Bruce.
We've been, been pretty quiet.
Okay, the fiscal also, Cheryl.
We have the fund status and it includes our rent today so that you have the, um, second half of the property back settled that is in there. And your cash summary for the year. Revenue, four point two million, and the expenditures, five point six million. And everything. Get listed the revolving loans. Neighbors' report for July this year and police department report. We have their C M S, of course, that's first, uh...
Any questions for Cheryl? I'm gonna ask the question that I asked again, or asked earlier, I guess. What are we basing our decision on when it comes to up the financials for the year?
I don't have an answer for that right now until the finance committee meets, and I haven't made yet.
Is there a finance meeting scheduled for what month it's due?
For when, right now.
Me, Eric, and Farrel.
So what are they going to discuss in the finance meeting? Our options, or, I guess...
Basically, their options and what we have, what we need. I need a good number.
To take to the bank. Yeah.
You, she, Cheryl's gotten some preliminary numbers. She threw some figures out there with, you know, what was collected through the, uh, it's a community fund and then what projected costs for her through the neighbors and everything. She's ran some numbers, but nothing's solid, like what?
What is projected cost to your engineer?
Twenty-three, twenty-five, seven?
But you, can't you do any budgeting with that? I mean, but they keep saying that, that we don't have, we don't have a number, we don't have a number.
We don't have a solid number. I don't have a solid number.
Well, the engineer's estimate ought to be pretty close.
Yeah, but the construction companies, I mean, we might add four different bids. And you know, they can give actual numbers, we have to have those numbers.
But on the, we can say, job, you have an engineer's estimate. And when the people bid, they have to either meet at that or can't be over it by a tenth of a minute. And that's how jobs are done.
I guess, have we discussed what that monthly payment looks like currently based on the engineer's estimate? Is that something that we're comfortable paying? Like, I haven't seen any of the monthly numbers really, so I guess I'm, I'm just...
I will not make a decision by myself, so I'm waiting for it tonight. I'll tell you tonight.
Do you have a ballpark for what it would be?
I guess, based on what you preliminary, preliminarily discovered, can the villagers support it?
I think so. And if you want something solid, you're not gonna get it tonight, 'cause I don't have one. That's all I can tell you, because, otherwise you wouldn't be this far into it.
We came this far, and we came this far not knowing.
I don't know what I don't know.
Okay. So a couple more weeks, you'll have more numbers solid once the district's coming.
More delays.
Okay, um, any other questions for Cheryl? My report, uh, the fair's going on, so wish everybody to go down and enjoy it. School starts next Monday, so little kids running out in the street, just be careful, buses will be running. So a week from tonight, or a week from next Monday. So that's all I have.
I'd like to go to an executive session for economic development.
When will, when will the tower go online?
It's next month. Uh, that's like October. A week, I don't know. Nobody does it very well.
Has the plumbing been done?
Not all of it, the vault and everything is set. Like all the telemetry stuff is...
So there's some tying up in front of, of the street?
Yeah, well, actually, it'd be tied in by, by the ditch.
Yeah, yeah.
Everybody have both your records registered?
Second.
Roll call.
Mark?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yep.
Egley? Yes. Flipper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yeah.
Oh, I was gonna mention something, but Make Energy, I talked to them today, that's a solid field. They have a public here, a public meeting Thursday.
On Thursday, fourth. I think that...
Yeah, there's grants, right?
Yes, I think they've got one, thirty point seven.
They told me they're having more than two.